Hey Dave, we don't have practice.
No.
No practice, okay.
Just Friday night.
Friday night, I'll be ready.
I'll be there for you.
Yeah.
He owns thirty-eight or seven. He used to own, there's a house here and a house there. He used to own all of them.
Yeah.
Through the years, through the years, this has been sold, this is so used to me. Only has one existing house here. Under nature.
There's no reason.
Yeah. He did. He don't have to go back.
Okay. Merry Christmas.
He's not, he still has access to this. That's all.
Good morning, thank you for being here. If you'll stand. We have a word of prayer. It remains standing for our place. Our dear heavenly Father God, we just come to you. And we say thank you for all the many blessings you give each one of us. God, as we enter into this Christmas season, God, we, we thank you for the, the greatest gift that's ever been given. God, we thank you for Jesus and the opportunity for forgiveness, God, and for the price he paid for our sins. But God, as we celebrate his birth, we reflect on our own lives and look at our lives, God. May our, may our lives exemplify Christ and Christ's love for the world. We thank you for him and the opportunity. God, we ask as we enter this meeting that your presence would be with us. God, we ask that you just lead us and guide us as we strive to be the best leaders we can and make the best decisions we can for this county, God. God, we ask that you be part of this meeting. You join us, you lead us, you guide us, God. God be with our leaders, our country, the world. God, we look around and we have questions and we wonder, but God, we were reminded you're still in control. It's still going according to your plan and God, we thank you for that. God be with us as we continue in blessed and every member here present today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Van Zant County Commissioners Court on Wednesday, December the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one at nine oh two AM. Forum is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the meeting of the Commissioners Court and approval of same for December the eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Milton. Got a, I got a second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions, corrections, or additions to the minutes? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner West. Got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about the bills that's been submitted? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion about the bills that's been submitted for ratified? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general business, is there any general business, any announcements or anything needs to be made?
Just received an email from Lance saying that the drawing for the, the place on the ballots will be tomorrow at noon here at the boardhouse.
Okay. The drawing for the placement on the ballot will be at noon tomorrow here?
Yes.
Any other announcements? Anything we need to be made aware of? Okay. Okay. Being none, we'll move to item number six, public comments. Scott, anybody sign up for public, no one signed up for public comments? We'll move to item number seven. Take up, consider right, take up consideration and possible action on order to conform election precincts following the redistricting of the Commissioners Court precincts pursuant to chapter forty-two, Texas Election Code. Result in changes that may have an impact upon the justice of the peace, hospital precincts. Y'all know, if we set the precincts, we voted to set the hospital and justice of peace precincts a while back, and this is just conforming the election precincts to match those precincts. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Milton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion?
I just have one question, none about our redistricting, but you know, I know the state, they're still under lawsuit. Do we know if we're gonna have our election on the March the first like we think?
Okay, Chris Morris is here representing.
So far.
So far.
I mean, and that's the best answer you can get so far.
Yeah.
It looks like it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, discussions? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Will you get that information to the, to the attorney? Or is that, okay. Item number eight, discuss and consider appointment of board of directors nominations for the Van Zant County Emergency Service District. Number one, for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three term.
Good.
Yes.
This is, actually, this is the first emergency service district in Van Zant County. Number one, in Maybank, in Van Zant County. And I've looked at all these applications, they're all in order. They're well qualified, Mr. Hoffo is Ross Hamilton in Tomso, I, I make a motion that we go ahead and appoint these as, to serve on the board of the ESD number one.
Okay. That's a motion from Commissioner Milton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion?
Are there, are the three positions that are open or? Three. Okay. Three this time. Okay. There'll be two next time. Okay.
Any other discussion? Being, being none, all in favor of pointing those three as the, on the board of directors, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and consider appointment of board of director nominations for the Van Zant County Emergency Service District. Number two, for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three term.
That's gonna be the ESD around very soon, and precinct one, I'm gonna move the table that for next week.
Okay. Now, we have a motion, okay, got a motion by Commissioner LaPrada to table, got a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions, discussion?
What, what, when does the term, when does the term end for the people that's in there now?
Who, at the end of this year.
Yeah.
December thirty-first.
Okay, just to, so everybody know, the people that are on there, serving there now are, they're not mandated, but they're obligated to stay on there until we get a replacement. So everything's still covered, I just want the public to know.
Right.
Nobody's, just walking out.
Right, yeah, they'll continue to serve till they, till someone's qualified. Okay, any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor of tabling item number nine. Say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider appointment of board of director nominations for the Van Zant County Emergency Service District, ESD three, for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three term.
Judge, this actually serves three precincts, precinct one, precinct two, and precinct four. And I, I know Mr. Shaw and I know Mr. Morris and I know Mr. Opus have served on there several years and and if any other commissioners that want to speak out on this, go ahead. Well, all three are currently members and I make a motion that we reappoint them.
Okay.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider appointment of board of director nominations for the Van Zant County Emerg, County Emergency Service District, ESD number four, for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three term.
Yes, so this is four and just opposite from what Mr. Milton said, it's our last one, you know, I really wish that our whole county was covered by ESD. I think it would be a win for everyone. But we, I have, there's three board members coming up, Bill, where's Scott Davenport, Jerry Hill, and Greg Preston. They're all three on there now, they've all put in an application to stay on there. I have never had one single negative report on any one of these. I've had lots of positive reports on them. So I make a motion, we go with these three gentlemen and to remain on the board.
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider approving invoice from Southern Software for DA's office site license. Scott, did you want to address?
That's the, the invoice they sent us for the site licenses, the sheriff negotiated. Basically just a.
Okay, sheriff.
Recap. So the, the system is divided based on the three modules. One is the mobile, which we have in our vehicles. Works with CAT. The other one is the report management system and the jail management system. So we asked Southern Software to give us a price for the jail management site licenses. They'd already given us the mobile at no charge. And so what they've done with this invoice, with this proposal, is they've essentially thrown in the other two for the price of one. So if you look at that invoice, they've knocked off a substantial amount, basically give us, we'll have all three site licenses for that price.
And that, like eighteen thousand. It was, that was already what we were gonna have to pay for the DA's, just creating them up.
Yeah, just have site licenses to allow them to come in with, with more users, they've essentially given us all site licenses so we can open it up, you know, as we need to get more users throughout the years, as the DA's office grows, as the sheriff's office grows. We'll have that site license to develop it up to multiple users. So I recommend.
Okay.
The DA she needs, like I said, just be ready for future growth.
Yeah, and, and I received an email from Panda, I thought it was already done.
Yeah, I think that's what's usually there all the way. We're waiting on the price. Then I sent you guys, or sent you.
We got the price when we discussed it, did we not?
I don't know, we're somewhere along the way, we had a slowdown, but here it is, and so please pick that.
And, and just for transparency, the cost of it is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. They discounted fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, but it's still a cost of eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that would be coming insanely from the contingency. Yeah, that's seen in, in, yeah, so that's where we're at. Any questions or discussion for the sheriff?
I just, Tonda, are you satisfied with the, this?
Well, as Sheriff said, somewhere there was a slowdown and disconnect, nothing's changed.
Still need it.
Access, we still have, until this gets through, we're still.
Yeah, my question is, once it gets approved, what will be the slowdown, the, you know, that's where I'm.
Well, as I understand it, once this gets approved and he tells Southern Software it's okay to give us usernames and passwords, it's just a matter of being my people contacted and getting username and password to get them.
Good. Right. I'm like, I mean, this is something that I thought was covered right from the day one, when we went with Southern Software.
I thought it was covered from day one, and then when we found out it wasn't, I thought it was covered, we had that workshop.
Day two.
October.
Yeah.
It's gonna be covered, I hope.
And we've also got the interface too, that one of those work.
Right, and the interface is done, I think y'all have the bill to approve today, well, twenty-five hundred dollars from, for LGS's part of the interface.
No, they didn't come in in time, they just came in two days ago. But now with the site license, with the interface, that should do the DA's office everything they need, and so we can work back and forth if any issues.
Yeah, the interface is working, it's working well.
Well, let me clarify on the interface part, that's the, we have the Southern Software side of the interface, the LGS side just came in two days ago. That's one Bill brought over a couple of days ago. I think we have the one for y'all to approve for the Southern Software side. So if there's any other issues, if we tell them that we're all together, we take, we'll, we're gonna do, it'll all happen.
With that one? Any questions or discussion?
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. So let me ask you, who's gonna contact? Who's gonna, I mean, because we could just sit right here now, you know?
Just so they're clear, we put it in here, that's okay.
Okay, okay, and I'll need that because I'm leaving lunch, so I'll need to skip that side, okay? Item number thirteen. Discuss and consider approval of access to Southern Software server through firewall for the local police departments.
I put that one on there, Judge.
Okay.
And it's related right back to the site license for the CAT. Steve, you wanna elaborate a little bit on that?
I said, on the mobile, basically, we, on the Southern Software side, we've got it opened up so that any of the police departments want to be a part of that, I can let them in. It's not gonna cost them anything, the Southern Software part of things. And so the only question was, was never determined is if the county was gonna charge anything for them to be able to access the. We did.
That's the firewall, right?
And we have that in place, so we're working on getting it to work, it's not working correctly through Southern Software. We do have it connected with the, the Kalister Poo.
But there's no additional cost in that?
We already made it through. But, yeah, the, the site licenses with Southern is already taken care of. So they gave us that one, so we can allow anybody in it that we want at no charge.
We finished the firewall and installation, all that's in place already.
So the question, I guess, is the cost of the firewall, that was, what was the question originally, was, were we gonna charge the municipalities a fee to access that firewall? That's, that's what.
But there's no fee on this.
No, no fee, we already paid for it, there wasn't.
Yeah, right.
The question was if you're gonna pass that fee along to the, to the cities or just, it's gonna cost the county of Forbes, let them in.
Well, my understanding, well, I don't know, I don't remember what the yearly fee was, but my understanding was that we paid that fee, allow the police departments access to it, to see how they liked it and if they wanted to continue it. We weren't gonna continue to pay the fee, were we?
So that was the question.
Well, that's the question.
Okay.
Oh, it was ever totally determined, that's where we got it.
Just a small fee, what I would say.
What was the fee, Scott, do you know?
I don't know.
The regular annual.
I don't remember exactly, it's eighteen hundred or something like that. Cause we had the, the maintenance and then you had the, the access fee. It was about three thousand, I don't remember exactly.
Annual?
Annual.
I would just say a, a small fee.
So, yeah, so I'm getting ready for a police chief meeting right after Christmas, right after the new year, and so what I'm trying to do is be able to give them some information that's accurate. Cause that's gonna be their question, what's this gonna cost, is it gonna cost, how much is it gonna cost? So I just, I need to have some kind of numbers out there that we're gonna charge them. But that's, I was talking with Commissioner Brad, Scott, about, I don't know, where we, where we ended on that, what we decided.
Okay.
That's why I put it on the agendas, we could come up, cause I know in the workshop, there was numbers going everywhere. Personally, I feel like it's just kind of an added expense to Southern Software. Them PDs, I know on the north side of the county, they run a lot out of the county, they do a lot, they have the sheriff's office. It's bad, the CAT system is as important to their safety as it is to the benefit.
And the CAT is beneficial in area right now, so when our dispatch key submit, I can, I can see who's responding to what county, what, way out, rules point, whoever it is. The PDs don't, they're not even see what, what we're on, or who else is on. So it'd be beneficial to them to be able to see what the calls are, the call notes. Right now, they rely on whatever dispatch gets out of the radio, on the actual, like I said, the actual mobile, we have in the cars. Yeah, we get all the detail, we can read that through there, see every little thing they've keyed in. So that's where we're beneficial to them, but, but once again, that's, that's something you guys have to decide as far as the cost goes. I just need to have another to tell them when I have that meeting after first of year, that's gonna be their question.
I don't, I don't really have a problem with it, I'm more not talking to anybody. If we can help everybody, I think that's a good thing. And I would say a small fee, just to cover the maintenance.
Yeah, I'd say whatever y'all decide, I just need to know that information when I walk in there and say, hey, here we go, yeah, we'll be a part of this.
Small fee being?
I wonder what, what you said, what you said, hundred dollars? Yeah, just a little portion of maintenance. If we gotta charge something, like I said, they run a lot out of the county. I mean, that, that's certain. Yeah, I would enjoy it. Just do the maintenance. I think so. Pick up the maintenance. Yeah, unless it just gets out of hand, price-wise, so, you know. That's fair.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion, at least for the first year, let's do it and see how it works out.
Okay. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner, state what your motion is, Mr. West.
To allow the other police departments in the county to use this system and we'll pay the maintenance the first year. And then let's see what, what it did, if there, if it's even helping them. And then we'll go there.
Okay, that's a motion, is that your second? Okay, got a second by Commissioner LaPrada, any other questions or discussion?
Who's gonna keep up with it?
Yeah.
You want to turn?
Scott.
Just do a service experiment for one year and then renew it before.
Yeah. That's it, Judge.
Yeah. Okay. You got, I got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That give you some direction? Item number fourteen. Discuss and consider and approve cyber, cybersecurity and district clerk file conversion using American Rescue Plan funds. Commissioners, you're aware of the, the conversations we've had, is this something you wanted to say, Mr. Yor?
Well, we, we had our last, we had our last meeting on the moon. I'm just practicing, solving shit, asking for, about a month. And so I asked Karen to be here today, so if you had any questions on the co-file, that she can answer those. We've been been working with Mr. Bass on these and we thought that they were all through cooperative purchasing and that we wouldn't have to do any formal bids on those, but he sent us a new email this week and he believes that because it is the federal funds that the cooperative purchasing will not work. So we are gonna have to do formal bidding on both of these. So hopefully he'll have some more answers for us when we zoom with him after today's meeting. But I did ask Karen to come down, if y'all have any questions on the co-file, because I don't think it's going to relieve the weight on the fourth floor. Karen may want to elaborate on that.
Well, what is gonna, what this bid is for, is for all of those old shucks that are in the file cabinets that just have the individual drawers that pull out, they're tri-folded. And this is to take all of those that, all of those out, preserve those, and then do a lot of the minute books. So it's not gonna do the whole floor, it's just gonna, and then they're, they will box those up for us and put them in acid-free filters. So, cause we have to keep anything from nineteen fifty back. I mean, that's the law, we cannot get rid of anything that's from nineteen fifty and earlier. So I was just thinking about the way, we could take out all of those shucks, that cabinet, I mean, that would eliminate a little bit of weight. And then, of course, it's just records management, I know there's a lot of things, I've been scanning, we started scanning orders in two thousand and three, we started scanning every single thing from two thousand and six forward, we, the whole files are scanned. It's just now of going back and pulling out a lot of those papers, we could get rid of a lot of those, but then that takes net. So Stacy was in the neighborhood today and she was coming to see me anyway today, she's with co-file and she can kind of explain a little bit better about what they're gonna exactly do in the, in this bid that she's.
So this bid will, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This bid is actually gonna cover some civil minute volumes, district minute volumes, and then the historical case files that, like Karen said, are shucks. Some of them are, have been tri-folded for so many years, I mean, these are gonna be some of the earliest historical records of Van Zant County. And when you try to unfold them, I, I just really don't even think that her team could scan them because they might even break into, you know, thirds. And so we were gonna try to mend those and get a good archival image that could be considered a backup as well and preserve those files. We would return them in. We would return them in acid free folders. So like Karen said, you can remove some of those old shelving that that actually housed the shucks now. And I know those shelving units are are heavy. Um, and so I just feel like it would help, you know, relieve some of that stress on and pressure on the fourth floor. Um, but also on this proposal, um, you know, co-file is a part of the state contract, the Texmas, which is a purchasing vehicle that that can eliminate you having to go out for bid. Uh, we are a state approved con uh, vendor on the Texmas Bible.
Okay.
And and Judge Commissioners, that would also eliminate all those shucks that are in that vault on the third, on, in my office. We could get rid of all of those. Those are two sides on both walls of all of us because that that's what's in the bid. Also are tho- all those trifolds. It's just, you know, they're, it's not really climate control up there. And those records are the ones that are deteriorating just because they've been in there so long and um, they're very fragile. I mean, um, Elvis came up the other day. He was very impressed with what we've already done from the eighteen hundreds. I mean, the eighteen fifties, uh, because I've already got a lot of those books done. That was that archive fee that we got. And that was what I was trying to do is all the earlier records to um, get those all preserved.
Okay. Okay, and we are having a meeting with uh, William Bass. You're more than welcome to be a part of that meeting. It's eleven today. Uh, I mean, you're you're. It's open to the public. Let me just say that. It's open to the public. I know you probably want to schedule, but uh, I wanted to invite you if you wanted, if you wanted. Uh, but I think we'd already decided as a court that that was our, that was a go ahead and start those two projects. This is basically just, you know, run it through Commissioners Court and get them to vote up and.
Judge, I make a motion. We officially approve these two items uh, to go on the American Rescue Plan.
Okay. But I got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second by Commissioner West? Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider and approve resolution for addition to the Van Zant County uh, procurement policy in accordance with two C R F two hundred compliance. Uh, Ms. Hill, did you want to, you knew I was going to say that. Uh, I I've talked, we we've had discussions. This is part of that American Rescue Plan stuff.
Uh, this is something that Grant Work sent me that we have to have in place before we can spend any of the American Rescue Plan money. And uh, this is a policy and procedures that has to be in place uh, anytime a government receives federal funding. Uh, the code effect, the code of federal regulations, part two, if you've ever read it, it's huge. Can't read it. Is a guideline to ensure the most economical purchases are made by government when spending federal funds. The goal of the code is to increase accountability and transparency on non-federal entities receiving the awards. It also makes uh, the spending for each entity so that everyone is spending the funds in the same manner. We just need for the judge to sign the resolution and get this back to Grant Work so that we can begin spending the American Rescue money.
Okay.
Before we begin.
Anyone have any questions?
Being asked if the feds went by their own rules, would it fall? I make a motion when I approve this resolution, authorize county judges sign.
Okay, you have motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Melton. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider allowing charter spectrum to install communication cable in the county easement on Van Zant County Road thirty eight twenty seven.
Yes, sir. The the thirty eight point seven turns into a Kaufman County Road and charter spectrum is installing uh, five of cables to give uh, internet access out there. And they requested that they want to put their uh, their cable in the county easement, not county right away. We don't have a right way, we have an easement. So. I want to run this through court, just like Trinity Valley, the Trinity Valley thing to us, to put their poles and easement on the same road. And so I make a motion to allow them, they're going to allow them to lay their cable and and car easement and they're they're going to stay within three to five feet from the fence line on the back, on the back slope of the road. And that in that in doing that, we are not, Van Zant County is not liable in any way if we ever accidentally cut that cable uh, maintain our road. Uh, we we won't ever do it on purpose, but if we accidentally do, we're not held liable for that. That's that's my motion.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider allowing precinct three road bridge to enter five vehicles into the Renee Bates online auction. Great all ID number zero one three 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 zero three. Great all ID number zero one three five three one three. Uh, nineteen ninety four Chevrolet pickup, VIN number uh, one G B G K O four L three R E one eight zero nine three seven of two thousand and two. Ford bus VIN number one F D W E four five F two two H B five six four seven five. It says nineteen ninety eight. Is that correct?
It's not correct. It's nineteen seventy eight.
That's a, that's a typo. It's a nineteen seventy eight. Nineteen seventy eight AM. Uh, General M nine one six, uh, VIN uh, zero T five eight one four six six one zero six five two. And that may be a letter O T. It is. It looks like O T. Five eight one four six six one zero uh, six five two.
Yes, sir. These are all in precinct three. They uh, to explain it to you that uh, I had these two gray dolls. One of them was actually just for parts to try to keep Dublin running. And uh, precinct four, uh, Mr. West had a a good gray doll and we were able to purchase. Mr. West let me buy that uh, gray doll from him a couple of years ago for the same amount that the uh, the dealership was offering him on it. And so I I we purchased that in three. And so these two machines are no longer needed. The ninety four Chevrolet does not run. Uh, at current, the uh, the seventy eight uh, general is not running. And so this is just stuff we don't need anymore. We might as well clean things up and as we're going on. So I make a motion that uh, the court allows precinct three to sell these five items.
And place them in our, can place them in the Renee Bay talks. Okay. That's a motion from Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion?
I will say I talked to uh, briefly with the the other commissioners that told them they will welcome this stuff. But it's, I don't believe it's anything that would help their their operations.
Okay.
I may have some of those VIN over here. Run over them.
Oh. You have them before you for your review? Yeah. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And I think some of you guys, my first, first guy's Keith, putting that on the agenda, saying, let's get the judge. Let's watch this.
And that typo was my fault, not anybody else.
Yeah, and they called it because we have the title and everything. We got that. Uh, item number eighteen, discuss and consider subdivision of Blasting Game property on Van Zant County Road thirty four oh three in precinct three.
Yes, sir. Uh, gentlemen, I want to bring this to you and ask you to waive some stuff on our subdivision. Yeah, this is a a piece of property that Mr. Blasen gain owned and he's no longer with us or his wife. And uh, they're, it's thirty acre piece of property. And there's a house and little under one acre that they're wanting to sell. They're going to keep the remaining twenty nine point something acres. This is an existing house with existing sewer, with existing electricity. And uh, so they came to me and and I told them I would, uh, Mr. Bolt came to me and asked about it. And I'm asking y'all to allow meats and bound survey on this uh, a little less than one acre of land uh, or or sewer, on site sewer. Sam has looked at it. All the on site sewer is on this uh, less than one acre. It's uh, Mr. Bolt paid the initial five hundred dollar application fee. So I'm I'm asking you to waive the the plat and to waive the second five hundred dollar fee. Because I couldn't, I couldn't tell them to get all this started. He was wanting to pay that fee. So that's my motion that you that you allow meats and bound survey on this less than one acre because it's an existing house and that you waive the approval fee, the the five hundred dollar approval fee on the second part.
Okay, that's a form of motion.
Sir.
Motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider approval of A G R subdivision in precinct four. Mr. West.
Uh, that's mine. This is a, it's a little bit unusual. Uh, it's a subdivision of six or seven lots uh, that they all are going to face onto a private road that is is being built. And uh, they have no intention of ever having this private road become a county road. And so I told them what, you know, to make sure that never happens, when they sell these lots, they've got to include in their sales never be, or whatever you you do yourselves.
Contract.
They've got to put in there that the land, uh, that the road will never be taken by the county and it's going to be their responsibility to maintain it. Uh, otherwise, you know, they they come back years later and say, well, you know, we want to be a county road and it's not going to be. So, but other than that, he's complied with everything that uh, is required under our subdivision ordinance and I I move, we approve it. But I just want to mention that because we may have some of those come up again and and we need to be sure that we take care of the people that are going to be buying those lots.
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, yes, sir. On the others that we've done, uh, Mr. West, we had them, before they sold anything, they put deed restrictions on the whole thing, spelling out all the stuff you just mentioned. Uh, can we get them to do that before they sell? I mean.
Yeah, well, they'd have to do it as they sell, I would think. I mean, you you could put one on, but they need it on each individual sales contract because people need to know. And it needs to be filed that way. So if there ever anything that comes up about it.
Well, my 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 question is how to, who's going to place that to know that it happens?
That's what I was going to say is when they file in our office, we do not read through all of their regulations and stuff. We file it as long as it has what we need on it, which is signatures. Then I'll read a title.
Okay, so you're saying.
I would prefer the the owner do that now before he sells and then that 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 deed restriction will, is there from now on.
Uh, we can do that.
And that that way, we don't have to worry about when something sells.
Yeah, because I had, I've never run across one of these before and I just, you know, becomes, usually they put them in and and there's never anything said where the county is going to take it or not take it. But in this particular case, he said they're not going to ever take it. And I said, well, who's going to maintain the road? And so, you know, the people that are buying need to know, not just the first owners, but the second, third owners. That's those are the ones I'm concerned with.
The two that, I've only done two and Susan can take the item. They did the deed restrictions on the whole piece of property, which transfers to each lot when they sell it. And then it's done.
Did they put it on their C P U?
They filed it with the plan.
They follow, they come in and they file it. And that way, the title company comes in when they're doing their research. They will pull that up and make sure that.
Okay.
That's attached to.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's great.
How does that affect our motion that we're saying?
Uh, doesn't affect mine.
Well, on the way, it's that, I think. Mr. West is going to follow up and make sure he gets that before they get it, before we, before we give them approval.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Does he need to amend this? Let's say he'll do that.
Yeah, I would like to have that included in the motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay.
That, okay.
Deed, file a deed restriction with the plan.
Exactly. Second. Okay, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion questions? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty, discuss and consider adding Veterans Service Office to the list of entities uh, to which the juror may donate their daily reimbursement pay. Uh, Mr., I mean, Mrs. Wilson is here to address the court for us on that.
Yes, Judge Commissioners, what this does is just adds uh, this entity to the list of it uh, on the jury donation form for all courts, J P Courts, County Court and District Court. Everybody except municipal courts. Uh, it's just adding the uh, county service office. I did speak with Kaufman County because I didn't know, you asked me, Judge, how these funds would be spent. Um, over there, they're like uh, the Rees Across America. They, these, they use these funds to buy some reefs. Um, they did memorial, they did lots at the memorial uh, in Kaufman. They bought, they brought breakfast for veterans. So really, this is just the benefit, the impact that the service office does for the, for the veterans. So, and I I spoke to Mr. Fott not this morning to to ask him if he do. And he said that, you know, he wasn't aware of it, but he said he doesn't spend a lot of money. But I told him this would just be kind of extra money if he wanted to buy, you know, they did a breakfast or something if I know that. That's really what it's for, just for the benefit of the veterans.
And that's the, and and I spoke with Karen because I was thinking, okay, we're talking about donating to the Veterans Memorial. Are the, are the uh, office, the Veterans uh, Service Officer.
And I think I would just have to go through Mr. Fott not, I think we have to set up a line item and um, I didn't know if if we would send him a check, Sandy, just to his office or if he wanted the money just to stay here until he needed the money. I didn't know how all that worked. And I told Mr. Fott not, I was not aware of that. So he can, I told him that he needed to get the Sandy, we'll get a line item set up, another one. And um, and then we could just go from there. He wants, I don't know how he's, he would be set up to spend that money, but that's what it's for. And it's not going to be a lot. I mean, you know, the drawers get paid six dollars for the first day and forty for the the next. And it just depends if they pick that entity to donate to. So, but he'll have a little bit of money to buy that.
Okay.
And it's just got to be a third of them.
So what what kind of line item would you be thinking of, Amy?
Well, we handle all the other donations as we set up a line item and once the donation comes through, Kenny writes him a check. It's up to the person that receives the money, how they're spending the funds. We don't hold them for them.
Okay, so he would have a fund to the veteran service.
So he would have a fund to the Veteran Service Office.
That would be his bookkeeping, not, not the county's. We just. That's not a count, that's not a county fund. That's not. The only thing the county does is we have a office for Mr. Fontenot when we pay him. Uh, when I read the code, I thought we were just gonna offset the office, but the, the government code, but.
So he, he wouldn't have a line item in his budget?
We only pay him, we only have an expense budget to pay him.
Well, I guess you could have a revenue.
The, the fun, the fund will be set up as a payable account. It'll come in and be done, it's donated to the Veterans Fund. It's a payable account. It's not a revenue line for the county.
We, we, we do have a small budget for him.
I thought, I thought we set up a small budget.
We do. He has funds for twelve.
Yeah. Okay, so the question is, do you wanna add the County Veteran Service Office to the list of entities that a juror may donate their daily reimbursement pay? And my understanding is, is the law.
It is in the government code. Yes, it is.
So.
Yes, I make a motion, we.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson. Third, by Commissioner West. Okay, it's covered. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments.
So, Luke Pearson.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second by Commissioner LaPrada? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-two, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget amendments, which would include the one that we, uh, discussed earlier on the Southern software to get that money, uh, where it needs to go. Eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. Got a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those same, those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-three, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various office departments, county government, approval of entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, you have any comments down there?
Yeah, this may be the worst we've done in a long time.
By Christmas press.
Yeah, we had, uh, three groups did not report on that.
Falling down on your job.
I know.
Did I ask what three?
I thought you might. Have JP Ford, Constable One, and the Sheriff's Office.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the monthly reports? So maybe, got a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion about the reports that were submitted? Are the reports that were not submitted? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.